Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will now call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will note that Councilmember Schultz is absent. She is ill this evening, so we wish her a speedy recovery. Tonight's meeting is conducted in person and online. Members of the public can view this meeting on burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join, and more information is available in our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements, and also, this evening, we will have a presentation by the Burnsville Foundation and also proclamations. But first, I want to let everyone know that this meeting was moved to tonight. Our meetings are usually on Tuesday night, but because there will be elections tomorrow night, and it is against the law for us to hold public meetings when there is an election. School District 194 and 196 have elections. There is no city or school District 191 election this year. So if you live in School District 194 or 196, you can find your polling place at www.mnvotes.org. Our regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, November 21st at 5:30 p.m. and Tuesday, December 5th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, November 14th, but that work session is being rescheduled to November 28th. So the special council meeting on November 28th is to adopt the 2024 budget and levy, and that will start at 6:00 p.m. due to state statute. All meetings of the council is held here in the chambers unless we say that it's going to be held at a different location. So first, this evening, the Burnsville Foundation is going to be presenting the city with a donation, and I'll stand over there and...
You go now.
Right here? Okay.
Whatever you want. And then we'll take the picture in front of everybody. You're making remarks.
If I can.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Well, Mayor and City Council members, thank you very much. As you may know, this is the 25th year that the Burnsville Community Foundation has been participating in the city Burnsville City Lighting. Over that time, the community, both individuals and businesses, have supported the lighting to decorate our community in a tremendous way. With the check that we have today, the total is nearing $700,000 that the Burnsville Community Foundation has raised for our winter lighting. We appreciate very much the partnership that we have with the city for the winter lighting, and we look forward to many years of it continuing. With that, I would like to invite everyone, November 22nd at 6:00 p.m., please join us Niclet Commons Park in front of Ames Center, where we'll light up the tree as well as hundreds of thousands of lights throughout Burnsville. It's a tremendous event for the community, and we hope you can all join us. And with that, we have a check today for another $35,000 presented to the city of Burnsville on behalf of the Burnsville Community Foundation.
And we'll do that over there, but before you do that, I want to thank the Burnsville Community Foundation on behalf of the council and our staff and the whole community of Burnsville for your partnership and your dedication to the community. And the things that the foundation does is purely focused on enhancing the community and its vibrancy and vitality. So thank you so much, because it meets the vision for Burnsville to being a vibrant community and to be boldly leading, and one of the things is that having our partners Day. Whereas the city of Burnsville is committed to developing a sustainable community by boldly lead in making sure that Burnsville continues to be a vibrant community, and we enhancing economic opportunity and community well-being while protecting and restoring come together to make Burnsville a better place. our natural environment. And whereas recycling and buying recycled products are a part of the strategy for a So thank you so much for that, and we'll stand over here. Now, did you bring the real check?
Yes, we have Adam here.
sustainable community because recycling protects our environment, it is a wise use of our
He's got the real check.
No, I was... Because all I do is I just hand it over, as usual, to Jenny, our CFO. natural resources and supports the economic well-being of our nation. Whereas participating in America Recycles Day 2023 is one way citizens can help raise So we'll take that picture over here. And to everybody. Okay. Perfect. awareness about the need to reduce waste by recycling and buying recycled products. We're gonna switch this. All righty, don't do something here. You wanna do the social media one? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the city of Burnsville, on behalf of the (applause) city council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 15th, 2023 to be America Recycles Day, and call upon all residents of the city of Burnsville to join in the celebration of this important date by doing your part and recycling your old shoes. All types of shoes will be accepted in any condition Monday, November 13th through Monday, November 20th. The shoes can be placed in a drop box in the Burnsville Ice Center parking lot and will either be reused or recycled into new product, proclaim this 7th day of November. And accepting the Recycle America proclamation is Daryl Jacobson. Mr. Jacobson, thank you so much for all of the work that you do. So we're gonna just do it over here, so everybody can... The next proclamation is for Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, and the five-year survival rate for it is approximately 60%, yet only about 24% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this early stage. Whereas screening for high-risk individuals can lead to its earlier detection and save lives, and funding for lung cancer research trails for behind funding for research of many other cancers. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. Disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well-characterized among African-American and other racial minorities. Whereas lung cancer in individuals who never smoked is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related death. 60% to 70% of individuals diagnosed who never smoked are women, and the proportion of lung cancer diagnosed in people who never smoked is increasing in the U.S. And whereas organizations such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to educating and working to increase screening rates. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the city of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Burnsville, Minnesota, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women as well as health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through screening, proclaim this 6th day of November 2023. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments, and this is the opportunity for any citizen to address the council on an issue that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone virtual?
Anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Members of the council? Okay, thank you. We will move on to consent, to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Collins?
Anyone online, Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council? Members of the council, I would like to remove item 4J for a separate discussion and vote, and the only reason I would like 4J to be removed is so that there it can be clarified. It's a grant that we're receiving and we're accepting, but it is the allocation of funds, and I want our staff to clarify the restrictions around those funds. So may I have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda, please?
Who should approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. The item is 4J, and this is to accept the relief grant from the Minnesota DNR for community forestry expenses, and Mr. Daryl Jacobson is presenting. Mr. Jacobson, congratulations. I know not every city received this grant, but we were fortunate to receive $500,000 for, through 2023. I think it's a three- and a half-year period, but the allocation of funds, and I want to make sure that people understand the restrictions around this grant, so this is not coming out of the general fund, if you will, so...
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So as the mayor mentioned, this was a competitive grant. We were fortunate enough to get full funding of the $500,000. There is several aspects that we're hoping to use this money for. It is laid out in the background, but about $240,000 of it, so almost half, is looking to be spent to help low-income private property owners with tree removal and tree replacement. And so that is a stipulation of the grant. The state of Minnesota came up with this money. This grant is administered by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and that was one of the goals of the grant, is to provide relief. It's the name, relief, clever name that they used, but to help some of these residents, because we have many trees that are dying, not just in Burnsville but all over the state of Minnesota due to emerald ashbore, and so that is the target species for removal and replacement. And so through this grant, we will be setting up programs for low-income residents to have access to this money. But as you said, it is a grant, and so there's a finite amount of dollars here, and so once this grant is done and those dollars are used, then, like you said, this isn't city funding, and so then the programs will be concluded at that time. And you are right, it is three and a half years, and so this is the acceptance of the grant is the first step in the process, and then once we get the contract in place with the state, we can begin our work and getting these funds reimbursed to us. And it runs through June 30th of 2027, so all of the funds need to be spent and reimbursed by June of 2027. And so just to outline some of the other things that this will help with is our tree inventory, which is very important, that we know what trees are out there that the city is responsible for. We're going to add some seasonal staff to help with that tree inventory, and then develop an urban forestry management plan, and that we'll be looking long-term at the thousands and thousands of trees that the city manages and how to best manage those, take care of them, and then ultimately replace them if needed, because the council's been very good about funding our EAB program for city trees, but that is still ongoing, and as I've talked to our forester, this kind of wave we're in right now, and most of the metro is, a lot of our neighboring cities are dealing with the same issue that we have, only some of them maybe even have it worse, is probably expected to last another two or three years as the emerald ashbore infects these trees and they slowly die off. It's not instant, so as time goes on, you'll see these trees die, continue to die, and need to be managed and replaced, and so this is, the grant kind of lines up good with the city's program as well.
Okay, and you're going to be rolling out a engagement or an advertisement so people know that these funds are available and they can apply for it?
Yes, we are working on that now. It is also a requirement of the grant, though, that we don't release any of that specific information or do any publicizing of it until after the contract's fully executed. And so we are working on those things, but we will release those as we kind of go through the process here.
Well, this is good, then, because I wanted to make sure that because it's public information now, it's in the background, and it's out there, and people will read it, but I wanted to make sure that all of this pertinent information is being explained so people understand. Okay, and I really appreciate that. I have Councilmember Gustafson and City Manager Lindberg on cue. Councilmember Gustafson, you're on deck.
That's really good news. I've noticed this last year in particular, a lot of dead trees in the city that I've never seen this many before, so it's good news to have, but I have a question for low-income. Do you know what the threshold is for that, for families or singles or...
So the state did not define low-income in the grant process, and so they are leaving that to each city, and as you know, this is very new that we got this, and so we have not defined that criteria yet. And so we will be working with our staff here in our finance department to see what those requirements should be and work with the state, but they did not put a definition in the grant on that, so...
We already have some low-income criteria set up in the city.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
City Manager Lindberg.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to take a minute to celebrate Daryl and his staff. This is a significant grant. There's no local match, as Daryl talked about, and really, it's to the benefit of our urban forest and to our residents who are struggling with the reality that many face when it comes to the private property issues, to your point, that can be challenging for folks. So we have a fantastic group of natural resources folks, and they deserve a lot of credit for this.
Yeah, thank you, because it really, we do have a lot of seniors and low-income families who have trees that they need to be removed or to be replaced, and so at least this is a mechanism that could help them. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, because not every city was allocated the funds. Members of the council, I move to adopt and accept the grant.
Second.
There's a motion.
I said second.
And a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
You're just not used to making motions, Madam Mayor, and you're like waiting for another question.
I know, I know, you're right. Usually, yeah. So the next item is the appointment for the Black Dog Watershed Management Organization and the Economic Development Commission. Members of the council and also our citizens, the council met and interviewed candidates for both the Black Dog Watershed Management Organization, and we received so many qualified applicants for the Black Dog Watershed Management Organization. And members of the council, I present to you a slate to be adopted. Mr. Kurt Ennisvett for a regular member, Mr. Michael Hughes for a regular member, and Mr. Todd Christopherson for a regular member, and Cindy Bergloff for an alternate member, and their term expires November 2026. May I have a motion, please, to approve these candidates?
Who does lead? Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Members of the council, we have two vacancies on the Economic Development Commission, and we had two retired people who resigned from the commission and one through death, and so this left some opening, and I present to you a slate for Lynette Dunsworth for a regular member, term expiring June 2025, and Andrew Nusma for a regular member, term ending June 2026. May I have a motion to appoint them to the Economic Development Commission, please?
Who to approve as lead? Present it. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of the candidates, and we look forward to working with you. The next item is 5B, and this is participation in a PFAS litigation settlement against 3M and DuPont in the forming of product liability litigation, MDL number 218. Chief Youngman is presenting. Chief Youngman.
Good evening, Madam Member, members of the council. Yes, before you tonight, we have three options to make a decision about the PFAS class-action lawsuit settlement. So I've got a couple of facts to run through, and then I'll seek some direction from the council. But we received notice of a class-action settlement against two chemical companies regarding PFAS contamination in public water systems. The defendants have agreed to pay 1.185 billion pending court approval. Eligible water systems have until early December deadlines to opt out, and we have been identified as one of those water systems that's eligible. So really, we have three options with this, is we can opt out and file our own lawsuit against the company in the future. We can not opt out, and we have 60 days to submit claims. We could not opt out and decide not to participate and not file anything. So those are really kind of our three options. The amount of the settlement is not available until after we decide whether to participate or not. So we don't know of that 1.18 billion, how much the city of Burnsville would get. This is a national settlement, so those facts would yet to be determined after people opt in or out, and we, like I said, automatically have been opted in. It's a matter of if we decide to opt in, we have 60 days to submit our claim, and then following that, we would find out how much we would get from the settlement. From a PFAS level standpoint, our six-year average of surface water is 4.68. We have no PFAS that's been detected in our water wells from a Department of Health standpoint. The EPA threshold was 7.0. It was reduced to 4.0, but there's a more complex calculation behind that, and we're still within the thresholds before we need to treat anything. So our water is safe for everybody to drink, and really, our policy question before the council tonight is, does the city council wish to participate in a PFAS class-action lawsuit settlement, and if we do, do we want to file the paperwork within the 60-day timeframe?
Okay, then there is no additional cost for us to file?
Madam Mayor, members of...
We're part of a class-action lawsuit?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there'd be some cost with the city attorney's office to file, but we wouldn't need to retain additional counsel to do that, so...
Okay, that's a good thing. Okay, members of the council, your thoughts? Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, BJ. Do we have any idea why the PFAS has been found in only our surface water but not the well water coming from the aquifer?
Madam Members of the council, Councilmember Keely, I have speculation, but I don't have any factual reasons why that. I could tell you that the well water is much deeper than the surface water, and there's likely easier leaching into the surface water since it's closer to things, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't develop that into the well water in the future.
The dumping of the, by 3M and the other company...
DuPont.
DuPont was done in rivers. Where were they actually discarding the chemicals? Was it into the river system or the sewage system, or does anybody know?
Yeah, I'll go to Mr. Shepherd.
Mayor and council, I actually don't really know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Something we certainly can look into and get back to the council.
Our previous attorney, Mr. Joel Jamnik, when this first came to us, I think it was discarded into the river.
That's what I thought.
And some of it also was the same thing like 3M, where it leached into the ground of, like what happened over in Woodbury and Cottage Grove and all of those cities. So it's part of how it leached, but it was that and also discharging into the river.
And I think, just as a follow-up, the PFAS regulatory levels that have been considered acceptable or unacceptable, has that number changed over the last decade?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, it has now decreased, the EPA decreased that, but there's more of a formula behind that, and again, we mix our surface water and our groundwater, so we're well below the threshold by the output of the water that we have. But there's still a lot to be learned about PFAS and how you can treat for it, and it's very difficult to treat for and remove, but yeah, there's definitely been a higher or a lower threshold from a regulatory standpoint that's evolving, and I would imagine that over the next decade, we're going to see more of that education and regulatory compliance.
Thank you. I have read quite a few stories where cities that were below the prior threshold suddenly were caught, were well below the current threshold, and so I don't know that we've ever had a problem. So for the comfort of our citizens of Burnsville and Savage who buy our water, we're well, well below, unless they continue to drop that number below four, then we're going to be above it, but thank you. Good questions and answers. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Workman.
To your original question, my preference would be to participate and then lean on the provided counsel from the class-action lawsuit. I don't think we need to go at this on our own, and you know, it's a lot of money, but I think it's going to be pretty watered down by the time all the municipalities and other government bodies decide to join, but it'd be silly not to participate in this, so that would be my preference.
Okay, great. City Manager Lindberg.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, I think just to repeat both what Councilmember Keely just mentioned and Councilmember Workman, first and foremost, to our community, our water is safe, we're well within tolerance levels. I think more nuanced than that, to Councilmember Keely's point, the regulatory environment and dynamic is changing here significantly, and we are in good company with other local government agencies dealing with what that means for us and what our future might look like from a water treatment perspective. But again, I think that the most important thing here is, again, from a comparison...
I have read quite a few stories where cities that were below the prior threshold suddenly were caught, were well below the current threshold. And so I don't know that we've ever had a problem. So for the comfort of our citizens of Burnsville and Savage, who buy our water, we're well, well below, unless they continue to drop that number below four, then we're going to be above it. But thank you. Good questions and answers. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Workman.
To your original question, I, my preference would be to participate and then lean on the provided counsel from the class action lawsuit. I don't think we need to go at this on our own. And, you know, it's a lot of money, but I think it's going to be pretty watered down by the time all the municipalities and other government bodies decide to join. But it'd be silly not to participate in this. So that would be my preference.
Okay, great. City Manager Lindberg.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, I think just to repeat both what Councilmember Keely just mentioned and Councilmember Workman, first and foremost, to our community, our water is safe. We're well within tolerance levels. I think, I think more nuanced than that, to Councilmember Keely's point. The regulatory environment and dynamic is changing here significantly, and we are in good company with other local government agencies dealing with what that means for us and what our future might look like from a water treatment perspective. But again, I think that the most important thing here is, again, from a comparison perspective, our levels are much lower than many of our counterparts. So that's good news from a water safety and quality perspective. It also probably means that our share of this settlement will be modest.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson.
Thank you. With the new levels at four and our surface water at 4.68, is that going to, has that gone up at all, or has it maintained itself over the six years? And do we anticipate challenges in the future with that surface water?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gustafson, yeah, it's been pretty stable. It's normal to use a six-year rolling average. So although you might have peaks and valleys in that six-year testing, we don't see a lot of changing, but we do think there is a potential, as we find more and more PFAS chemicals and more and more things. So we do think in the future, it could potentially go up, or we could potentially find it in our wells. So we don't think this issue is going away, and we think in the future, we're going to, it's going to be more prevalent. The timeline to that, we don't know, but we don't see like any sharp spikes that we're worried about in the short term.
Can I follow up with that, too? Is there a way to mitigate that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there's a lot of different ideas on how to deal with that, and no one's figured out a great way to remove PFAS. So there is some filtering out there that helps with it, but doesn't completely eliminate it. So our utility staff and consultants we're using are looking at options for that, and that's part of that money we asked for from the state for the rehabilitation of our water treatment facility, would add some of those newer technologies to help with that. But again, it wouldn't completely eliminate it. I don't want anybody under the false pretenses that it's just as easy enough to filter out because it's not, but it would help with that, so.
I think a lot of this is at a molecular level, isn't it? So then you're talking about micro-microplastics.
Yeah. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I see that they've dropped the level to 4.0. However, our report of 4.68 is only in the surface water. And as you noted, I think the key is we mix our deep well water with that surface water, further diluting it well below the current EPA level. So still a concern, and I would assume, with all respect to all lawyers present and watching, that the 40% cut for the class action lawyers wouldn't be unusual. And so the remaining balance allocated to this, and then there's costs and everything else that goes with it, and there's probably some health companies that might weigh in and take a chunk. So what's left for the cities to help mitigate? It's okay that we're not going to get very much because our water is cleaner. I'm okay with that. It's a good idea. But communities like-
But at least we should get something.
Like our friend, Mayor of Cottage Grove, you know, they were one of the first ones to pop up with, you can't drink the tap water anymore, all of a sudden, and they were caught off, caught off guard with the new standard. So they need the help.
Yeah. Councilmember Workman, if there are no other questions or comments to make, do you want to make the motion?
I will. I would just move that we-
Participate.
Direct staff to remain in the class and file claim forms as written in our background.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief Youngman. Okay, and the next one is also yours, sir. This is dismissal of municipal storm water pond litigation. Chief Youngman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Getting used to this. We're here to talk about municipal storm water litigation. So the council authorized staff to have the city participate in municipal storm water pond litigation. And really, the purpose was to recover costs associated with the disposal of contaminated sediment, dredge from storm water drainage ponds within the city, and many other cities. We've had several negative rulings, both in Circuit Court and the appellate court, and our legal council is recommending that municipalities end the litigation. And really, the recommendation for dismissal is appearing on your agenda tonight. So again, we, from a staff perspective and legal perspective, we would recommend that we end the litigation. So is really the policy question for the council, is the council supportive of closing the storm water pond litigation?
Councilmember Keely.
I would move that we end the litigation. It was a, this started under Craig Ealing, I believe. And it was, it struck me odd back then-
And Mr. Jamnik.
And Mr. Jamnik. How this made sense as a legal argument, so I guess I'm not too surprised that it didn't work out. But I think it's time to pull out.
Yeah. With the many negative rulings in recent decisions in the Eighth Court, Circuit Court, and the Appeals Court, it just makes sense for us to end it. So you're making a motion, Councilmember Keely?
Yeah, I said make a motion to withdraw.
And there's a second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief Youngman. The next item is ordinance adopting revisions to City Code Title VIII, Public Ways and Property. Presenting this evening is our city clerk, Mrs. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have Title VIII that has been reviewed by the, there we are. Let's see if I can get that on the screen for you. We have Title VIII, and in your background, we highlighted all the specific changes that were recommended by the Code Review Task Force. Many of these changes were just language amendments, sometimes deleting unnecessary sections, that type of thing. On your screen here, I have some of the, I have a couple of things in Chapter Five. They did clarify the minimum height and location of address numbers specifically on house and commercial, the location on commercial residences. Chapter Six, we consolidated the special event permit language. There was many sections of it. It was kind of consolidated into one section. Chapters Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve were all combined into one chapter. And in Chapter Fourteen, we, the task force did eliminate the limit of 60 bus benches in the city.
Can you speak to the right-of-way for transit facilities and removing the cap? And I understand that it still remains that the owner of these benches need to continue to maintain the benches, and they need to be on a transit stop.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. The existing regulations that require all the bus benches to be on the transit line and that the owners of the benches maintain all of them is still in place. The only change that was made was the removal of the cap of 60 in the city.
Okay. One of the things that I remember when we talked about this in the past and why the cap was put in is that we didn't want all of these benches scattered throughout the city. And so we restricted it to be in transit ways, but it's around transit stops, correct?
Correct. And I remember this discussion as well, and I think that we had the, we had 60 in the city at that time, and the council just set the limit at what the existing number was.
For the transit stops, for the buses, where they stop. So as long as that's in place, the thing is, you don't want the city to be cluttered with a lot of benches that are truly just about advertising and not about the function of waiting for a bus. Councilmember Workman.
So if, what's chapter? This is an irrelevant question, but if there was 60 when that was created, and now the orange line has come in and added two more, would we not then be over that cap today?
So the orange line and MBTA, those are not classified as bus benches. Those are classified as-
Bus stops.
The like, the language is escaping me right at this second.
Transit shelters?
Transit shelters, yes, correct.
So a standalone bench sitting by a pickup sign is more what we're talking about rather than the sheltered heated lid? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson.
I was part of that discussion, of course. And when I was listening to you, how many bus stops do we have now? Do you know offhand?
I do not.
Dan, do you know?
Mm-mm. I don't know. It's a lot.
I know you're pretty good at knowing what's going on with the MBTA. But I started thinking more about this in today's world of mass transit and trying to get more people and buses and that. This is more a question for our council. Would it make sense that we turn that from benches, that if you want to put up benches, you need to put up a shelter with that bench?
Remember, we had that discussion because it was about MBTA and the company that places the benches. And they, MBTA didn't want to put up the shelter.
No, I understand, but then now we're talking about private wants to come in and do some things possibly, and would it make sense that they put up a shelter? I mean, I get around the town like everyone does, and you see people in the rain and snowstorms and everything else, standing there and no place to get out of the elements at all. And again, in order to kind of promote more of the mass transit, which we're a big part of these days, especially out here in Dakota County and all the different things that MBTA is doing, does it make sense that if you want to put up a bench, you need to put up a shelter with it? And that's, again, a question for the council.
Did the task force discuss it?
They really didn't discuss the-
The shelters.
The shelter at all.
Okay.
You know, the task force, it's our citizens that are doing this, and of course, the city's well represented with legal and neighborhood services are there. I mean, there's all different people to answer questions all the time for all these. But the task force operated well because the task force was allowed to operate as an advisory group, so they went through everything and then would advise the council. And sometimes we accept it, and sometimes we don't. I mean, that's with all of our, with all of our commissions as well, so. So that never got into it, and it was really something that just came to my mind here recently, that maybe there should be shelters out there instead of just the benches sitting out there in different areas.
Councilmember Keely.
Thank you. Well, it's a good subject matter. We've talked about it in prior years, prior to MBTA Connect, to try and get to where we had more shelters to, for the exact same reason, right? When it's in the winter or spring and fall rainstorms, and people are waiting for a bus, they're, they're having to traverse that weather to get to the bench and then stand there in the elements. And now with MBTA Connect, door-to-door service, there's less dependency on that. And we're not adding a lot of stops, as you probably haven't really notified the city that we want to add a new transit stop. The ones that, we're a mature, built-out city, so the transit stops that we have are pretty much the ones we've had for many, many years. But I think as MBTA Connect, door-to-door service continues to expand at an astronomical rate, there'll be a little bit less and less dependency. And in foul weather, we'll see a spike in MBTA Connect calls as opposed to the person just walking to the transit stop that they normally might go to. But I do think if we have any, and I brought this up years ago, I said, why don't we have just all shelters, right? Why do we have benches? Why isn't everything a shelter? In a lot of major metropolitan areas, and even in twin cities where you have extremely high density, you'll see that more often where it's rarely a bench, it's almost always a shelter. But in our suburban environment, that's a little bit more of a bus bench, which I, to me, it's just, okay, well, people in suburbs just have to stand out in the weather, apparently. But if you're in the inner city, you get a shelter, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot to do with the volume.
Yeah. I remember the discussion, and it had to do with the expense on the bench company. So one of the things that I would like, and to see if members of the council, if our staff can get from MBTA, how many bus stops does MBTA make within the city?
I'll find out.
Because that way, it's a better way for us to manage all the benches, if the ordinance says that it has to be at a bus stop.
Yes, Madam Mayor, then I can follow up with that also.
Because if we take away the cap, then we can manage it through-
The bus benches are privately owned.
Yeah. Because the benches are privately owned, but the bus stop is MBTA.
Yeah, they build it to sell it for the advertising. That's the model.
It's mostly about advertising.
Transit didn't get in a business, well, that's the only reason a private company would put up a shelter for public transit, right? It's to throw marketing in it and sell the marketing.
But for us, it's a, it's a good way for us to manage the output of all of those benches throughout the city.
Yeah.
And the ordinance says that it has to be at a bus stop.
Right.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, City Council, currently, we only have one vendor that owns the bus benches in Burnsville, and I believe there are 60 of them still to this day. And they are required to get a bus bench permit for them every year.
Okay. But let's find out from MBTA how many stops they have within our city.
Okay.
I can find out, Michelle, and I'll pass, pass the number around.
Can we pass this and just minus Chapter 14 in this and bring that 14 back after we get the information?
Well, because it's already in ordinance that it's supposed to be only, but then when, when, and she says that every year they have to, so if they have benches where there aren't any bus stops, then we can let them know that they need to remove it because it's in ordinance already.
But by pulling, pulling the cap right now, and there's a process for each one that has to go through, right? So the bus bench company isn't going to be able to just stick a bench next to the road. They're going to have to go through the process, and it has to be approved as a transit stop.
That's right, and that's the reason if we know-
To justify the bench being there, right?
Yeah. And if we know where the transit stops are, when they come into the clerk's office to pull a permit, now we know whether they are going to be-
I would agree with the task force's work, that that cap was never really necessary in the first place because they weren't putting them just anywhere, everywhere. They could only put them where the transit station said, we're going to put a stop there.
But now, to your point, with a lot of the MBTA Connect service, there probably won't be that many people.
Certainly won't be much in the growth of new bus stops. Maybe some contraction, actually.
Yeah. And then the other thing is that how many stops now do they have? Okay, very good. I'm okay because as long as it's in ordinance, and we'll just have to get that information, and as long as the clerk's office has that information, then if they come in, they're going to put up another bench, and you know where the transit stops are, then we have to.
One more question.
So if we do this this way tonight, and again, it's in there, at some point, if we decide
that as a council, that we'd really prefer them to put up shelters when they do those benches, can we add on to that?
We can always amend it.
Okay.
It is, it is within our-
Well, then, we can have that discussion down the road.
We can always amend it, yes.
I'm not so sure we can require it, but we can encourage it.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Well, I don't know that we'd want to. It's a dramatic difference in cost.
Yeah. City Manager Lindberg.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just ask the council for clarity if there is a majority direction to have staff study and bring the transit shelter issue back to you.
No, not the shelter, just, just where the stops are going to be. I think the shelter issue is just, we need the bench company to be at a work session to talk about, like we always do.
Yeah.
So it's not the shelter issue. It's a huge expense for them, but I think we can manage all of that through the ordinance that we have in place right now.
Madam Mayor and City Manager, I'd be happy to bring back some information from MBTA on the shelter provider, right? And the discussions that we've had in the past about trying to get shelters versus benches. I think there's always work there. Again, back to my comment, it's about volume. I think it's in the big volume stops where they can warrant it. But as a marketer, I get where Dan's coming from. It's a benefit to the rider, whether there's one rider, an hour or 25 standing there. It can be a benefit to the, to the marketing company, the bench slash shelter company, because a bench offers one surface.
Yeah.
A miniature billboard that resembles what's on the side of a bus, only a lot smaller, where a shelter would have multiple panels. And so that is a different consideration for the city, for us, of how many of those do we want, and with all that advertising, is that what we're looking for? In, you know, in exchange for rider comfort, put it that way.
Yeah. And I would think that that is a discussion that if we want to move forward with shelters or any of that, then we'll come back and put it on round table, and then we can invite the bench company and MBTA to the table to have that discussion, and then we can make a decision on whether we amend the ordinance to require shelters.
I think that's actually not a bad idea, just to hear from the bench company and what they're doing. They may, is it owned by a realtor by chance?
Because everything, they're all realtors. Because everything, they're all realtors.
I'm thinking that that's an LLC by a bunch of realtors.
Yeah, because they're all realtors.
Entrepreneurs. We love it. Well, that's a good point to just have them in as part of a process of learning more about what determines bench versus...
Shelters.
And what their experience is from a financial standpoint, is where they've done it, is it worth it? And do they feel some pressure from transit agencies to do that, right? How do they work with the transit agency to do that? And I'll do the same... I'll have the same question posed to our executive director as well.
Yeah. And you can also ask the question at your MBTA board about shelters versus just benches.
Yeah. Because we get updates when a shelter's put in or enhanced and enlarged type of thing. So, I think there's some shelters at... well, at transit, like we have the shelters, of course, at transit stops that are large transit stops. But these like off the side of the road, bus stops really quick, people get on up and go. Like in front of my townhome, there's a stop, but there... I don't think there's even a bench there. It's just a stop. We have grass that they stand on.
We have several on the parkway, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that...
Go ahead.
That is an important point of the whole conversation is I don't know if you logistically could build a shelter at a lot of these stops because they're put on boulevards where there's not enough space to even build a shelter in the first place.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that a blanket... what's the word? Shelter requirement would work, but I think if you... there might be a few options in the city.
Well, I think that'll be something if we still want to explore that next year, we can direct staff to put it on the agenda and then we'll invite all of these people in and then we can decide what we want to do about it. But don't... yeah, staff not to do any work.
Mayor and council, just for clarity, I'll wait to put something on roundtable following the information that we discussed to Councilmember Gustafson's question about transit shelters. I also would encourage you that if we do bring that conversation back, that obviously getting the vendor involved in the conversation is good, but I think it's going to be important for us to pull our team together, public safety, our engineering staff. Maintenance of those structures would be an important consideration as we have that conversation, perhaps ahead of talking to a vendor. So, we'll go that direction.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. With that, then, members of the council, if there's no other concerns about what the task force is presenting to us, I need four affirmative votes for the adoption of the summary and ordinance and then three votes for the... but I can bundle it if nobody's going to object to anything.
Bundle it.
Bundle it.
Okay. May I have a motion then?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Well, thank you.
Task force. Good work by the task force.
Yeah. Very nice. And congratulations.
One more chapter in December, Councilmember Workman.
And congratulations to the task force and all the work that they have done. And I think they have one more or are they all done?
That's correct.
Well, we... I think that we will see if the council doesn't need them to review any other items. We might be done.
Pizza party.
Yeah. Okay.